This is a hybrid meeting being recorded and may be accessed by Webex. The meeting link is on the calendar at Burlington.org. If connectivity is lost and we have a quorum in person, the meeting will continue. Our first item is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just before we get started, may I ask for a moment of silence, please? With your permission, we lost our, one of our developmental skills instructional assistants on Sunday. She worked at Pine Glen. Kathryn Jeski, but kids all knew her as Katie J., worked in the DSC classroom at Pine Glen. She was, I can't say I knew her well, I think we crossed paths, but all of her colleagues said she was remarkable with some of our neediest learners, and she just dedicated herself tremendously to them. I know she has a family that she's left behind, our thoughts go with them, and out to the Pine Glen family and where she worked. So she just was a great contributor to the district and really put all of her energy into the, again, to Burlington children. And I just wanted to thank her posthumously for her efforts and again wish her family peace. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next, we have the approval of the warrant.
I move we approve the warrant as presented.
Any questions on the warrant? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, it's five zero. You have the meeting minutes of August 22nd.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of August 22nd.
I'll second.
Questions? I think Mary and sent revised minutes today, we're good?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm going to abstain, sorry, four zero one.
You weren't there.
Correct. Student report, welcome back to, is this your senior year?
I'm a junior.
Junior year, okay. Akshara, welcome.
I don't have much to say today, but...
Can you unmute real quick? There you go.
Pull it closer so we can hear you. There you go.
I don't have much to say today, but these student councils will all be meeting next week just to finalize some fall plans. Like I know the junior class was thinking of doing like a flower fundraiser just for like the fall or like a pumpkin patch situation. And freshman elections will also be happening on September 17th, so we're going to welcome the new freshman class as well. And tomorrow we'll all be talking about our summer reading books in small book talk groups during our extended flex blocks, which we've been having for about like a week now, like an hour flex block. And our school just got the securely passed again. We started in like April and I think they're going to stay for a while now, like a year. And the new phone policy has just started as well. So, I want to see, I'm excited to see how that goes on.
Awesome. Thank you. Yep, I need, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask you, is the phone thing working out okay?
I think it depends on what class and what teacher you have, because I think some teachers just are fine with you like just keeping your phone in your bag as long as you're not on it.
Right.
So I think it definitely has helped students to not be on their phone at all. And if they, if like teachers do see kids on their phone, they do take the phone and like ask for the phone pocket and stuff.
That's good. Anything else exciting happening?
Not really.
Week one, week one. How many days are in the schedule?
Akshara, set it up a little bit, say the new associate principal has been awesome.
He's been wonderful, Mr. Braggs. He's been great, great person. I'm excited to get to know you as well, Mr. Braggs.
Well, we're very happy to have you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to move something up here or no? Oh, it was uploaded, okay. I have public participation. Come on up.
My name is David Hanafin, I have six kids in the school district here. So, I've spoken before and the thing I wanted to talk about was the survey policy. So, last month I believe it was, there was a subcommittee meeting and then there was a subsequent meeting here for the school committee. And I just wanted to kind of clear a few things up. I know that the comments were made at night, where the people said that the subcommittee meeting, people were satisfied with the compromise and they thought it was a decent policy. And I just wanted to make it clear that everybody that I heard at that subcommittee meeting made it clear that they were okay with it if it was an opt-in. So there were two directions that the school board could take, an opt-in or an opt-out. And what I had heard when I was there was that everybody had said, if it's an opt-in, that's great, if it's an opt-out, we're not happy with it. And someone did make the point, which I thought was reasonable, saying if you have to affirmatively sign a permission slip to go on a field trip, this is far more sensitive, so you should have to affirmatively sign on to let your kid take a survey like this. So, point of clarification on that, that we were satisfied if it was an opt-in, but not if it's an opt-out, because the opt-out has failed us repeatedly and we don't trust it. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was that there were two policies, one for the youth risk behavior survey and one for the rest of it. But that December climate survey, which was discussed briefly, is one that I have as many concerns about as I do the youth risk behavior survey, because that one may appear more benign, but we had spoken about it to different people on the school board, at the different schools, and I know I've talked about it with Dr. Conti, Dr. Chen, but there's some open-ended questions on there. It says, do you feel welcome and affirmed in your school? Do you feel as if your viewpoint is supported in the school? And it's just a yes or no answer. So, my question has always been, who interprets those questions and who interprets the answers? So if I'm on the wellness committee and I'm the person that's reading those answers, I'm going to interpret it much differently than the people that have been interpreting it in the past. So if my son says he does not feel as if his viewpoint is supported in the school, okay, why? There's no, there's no follow-up to that. So, the school has looked at this and said, we need to increase DEI efforts, we need to put more pride flags, we need to put more stickers on the wall, we need to hand out banners and everything else, whereas that's offensive to a lot of kids. So, that December survey I think needs to be looked at. And you made the point that you said that the youth risk behavior survey doesn't determine focus or curriculum, it's just for information gathering. But then it was said later that that December survey, the climate survey, does help determine the focus and the curriculum in the school. So, I've had a strong disagreement with the focus and the curriculum and the direction of the school, and a lot of it was pointed back to that climate survey. So I think that needs to be, we need to dive into that deeper. And I think that that needs to be looked at as sensitively as the youth risk behavior survey. And then, you know, here we are, one weekend of the school year, and we're already back at it again. There's already been a number of complaints in the middle school filed against the usual suspects, a teacher can't keep the agenda out of the classroom, I don't know if you're aware or if you're not, but it started already. And Ms. Monaco, I got to call you out on something. There was a post that a few people had sent me, I don't go on Facebook, I have no social media, but you had posted something where it showed a school building, all shot up with bullet holes and a distressed American flag upside down with bullet holes coming out of it, and a sarcastic sign out in front of the school that said, this school is protected from drag queens and from dirty books.
Thank you.
I'd like to finish.
No, the time is up. Three minutes.
So that was a swipe at people that have traditional values and you took a swipe at us, that we want to get this agenda out of the schools. And I think you should be aware that the last couple of school shootings were done by people identified as transgender.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there only one person online? Okay. All right. Subcommittee reports. Anyone?
beginning work. And on the field committee, we plan to have a meeting here in the next week or so to vote on that design. We'll bring back to the school committee for approval, then moving forward to get it ready to go out to bid here shortly. So we're ready to go first thing in the spring to break ground.
Madam Chair. Bob, just make sure I'm correct on my dates, because while Mr. Brooks is here, a tree came down at the high school right before the school opening and Park and Rec responded to help clear it out pretty quickly, is that, is that right?
Close. After the school opened, it was this Saturday, yes, Park and Rec did respond to it, as well as Burlington Police Department. So while it was on the weekend, didn't really impact us too much with any events that we had going on, but their response was rapid and they cleared up the tree. It was a large-sized tree, one that we had not been watching, but it did fall down during the storm.
So, through the chair, Mr. Brooks, if you could just pass on our gratitude, I think that would have made the start of school very difficult.
Absolutely, sure will. Thanks.
Was that one of our, did I go towards our tree budget?
Not at this time.
Not yet, okay.
No. I could respond and say that we have started to use our tree budget at Pine Glen, taking down some dangerous trees.
Okay, nice. I don't have ways and means, I don't think, online. Any other announcements? Dr. Conti?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to say at your desks, Robin provided the September 1st enrollment numbers. I had gotten a couple of emails from folks asking. Again, just want to thank this committee, thank the town meeting, thank the community for, for their support. Our elementary class sizes, district-wide, are around 17, again, that's an average. As you can see from the numbers, very few classes over 20. We have a couple of classrooms, third grade at Francis Wyman, where we have a slightly larger group of kids, but the rest of the classes, again, class sizes at the elementary level, I think are, again, very, very reasonable, very small, which is, I think, important to develop those, those relationships and to meet a diverse need of learner. So that's great. And then you can see that the middle school and high school numbers are, are what they are September 1st. We still are having students register. Robin mentioned that she didn't have quite the flood that she had last August, but she still is having, are having families coming in register. But some folks had asked me for the enrollment, so that's September 1st numbers. I also want to just take a minute, Madam Chair, to thank everybody. And again, there's a lot of work done during the summer by our clerical staff, by our maintenance crews, by our custodians. I think the buildings are already, I think it was in every school the last couple of days, and every principal I spoke to said it was a really smooth start. I know Bob really tried to do a lot to make sure the kids are arriving on time. And we always have hiccups the first couple of weeks with the buses. Monday, this Monday, first day for pre-K and K is always picture day, so the buses always run late. But I'm just saying, I think I was in the schools, I saw students in classes, you know, ready and eager, excited to be there, ready to learn, teachers were welcoming, it just had a good feel. And I think that's, that's not by accident, it really comes from a lot of hard work from our teachers and from our principals, and I just wanted to make sure I thanked them for, for such a smooth start this year. That's my other announcement.
Thank you. Keep looking here this night. All right, the science club request.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the teacher's contract, the Tim McMahon, middle school principal, is supporting the establishment of a new extracurricular club, science club at the middle school. It is a three-year process, and again, year one would start at 500, year two goes to 750, and then year three, we would place it in the contract on the appropriate category. So, again, the science club is meant to be, to support students who are interested in science, technology, engineering principles, and students are able to select a topic for their personal interest, and the idea is to investigate and develop the idea through scientific research and experimentation. So, I support this request from the middle school to establish a science club, and it's recommended the committee approve the science club stipend for MSMS in accordance with the VEA contract in the amount of $500.
You want a motion?
I do.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
Just one quick question. So is this going to be kind of like a feeder program for the pathways, or is it intended to be something completely separate?
It's, I think it's going to be separate, but I think anytime we can connect, we'll try to connect. So I think if we can generate more interest at the middle school, that'll drive interest in, at the high school.
How many positions? Because it's just, it's just the one in 500.
Just the one, and then if we have a flood of students, then I'll probably come back and ask to get coverage of it. But the late buses start, I think, in a week or so, and this committee has always encouraged the middle school to have more after-school activities, and so encourage the establishment of a science club.
All those in favor? Opposed? Chair votes aye, five zero.
Thank you very much. The next agenda item, Madam Chair, is the update of the special Olympics stipend. We'd like to change that. We've changed how we recognize and celebrate our students. We used to participate in a small regional Special Olympics with Wilmington and some schools from Bill Ricker, and because we participate in a larger Special Olympics Games with Lab and Lexington, the staff really wanted to create a Burlington event, and so they created our own Unified Games. I think Ms. Masardo, you attended our first annual Unified Games, and because we're doing it ourselves, it just takes a significant more amount of time to plan. So, staff is requesting that in order to do that well. And in the first annual Unified Games in Burlington, we're a big success, hosted at the high school. We'd like to change, school committee to approve the change from category one to category two, and that is moving the stipend from $1,334 to $2,185. So I'm recommending the school committee accept the change from a Special Olympic liaison to a unified sports, unified games stipend and moving it to category two.
I'll second Ms. Monaco's motion. Questions?
Yeah, just under the Schedule F, it notes the head coach stipend and the assistant coach stipend, is that part of that as well for the?
Okay. No.
Yeah, so this is the paper, I think is the amended most.
Okay.
Yep.
Tracking.
You good? Yeah, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, five zero.
Thank you. Madam Chair, because Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Braggs are here, I was hoping we could jump up in the agenda to talk about the second reading of the high school handbook and have Mr. Sullivan introduce our new associate principal at Burlington High School to the committee and to the community.
Come on up. I don't know if it's muted or not.
It looks like it's on.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I know Mr. Braggs appreciates the courtesy. Though I'm very excited to introduce Mr. Jarrell Braggs tonight. Mr. Sheehan is rightfully so, enjoying his retirement currently. We saw him the other day and he is certainly enjoying himself. But Mr. Braggs came on July 1st with us, and he's already been a terrific addition to our, to our team, bringing a lot of fresh perspectives and new ideas. He's building really good relationships. It's been refreshing his student-centered approach and supportive of educators in the building, and just really look forward to all the, the ideas and new initiatives he's going to help us bring to Burlington High School. So, Mr. Braggs?
Oh, thank you. I didn't know I was going to have to speak. I'll just say, five minutes. Absolute honor to be here. I just, a big thank you to the students firstly, they have welcomed me with warm arms, they have come up, introduced themselves, the kids have been so nice, so it really means a lot. The staff, the admin staff, Mr. Sullivan, Dr. Conti, Dr. Chen, my colleagues at the high school, they've all been great. So I feel very welcome, they've made me feel very comfortable in a short period of time, and I'm excited to be here. It's been, I was, I enjoyed the summer, but it was a weird summer, because I was like excited to get to the school year. So I'm excited that the school year is here, and just was watching some games before I came in, so it's been great and proud to be a member of this community going forward.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Just again, just so Mr. Braggs can meet all of you, Mr. Brooks, again, parent of two?
No, welcome, look forward to having you here, just if you get some chance after everyone goes around the circle, I'd love to hear a little bit about your background and, you know, what you think the first 90 days success looks like for you.
Hi, I'm Megan Novacek. I have a newly minted middle schooler and one who is starting her fifth year, or fifth grade at Francis Wyman Elementary. Very excited to have you. I hope that excitement to start the school year carries with you year after year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kathryn Vaughn, and my daughter went K through 12 in the Burlington school system, graduated in 2018, and is now getting her PhD at Fordham in New York City.
Awesome.
In school psychology or clinical psych for adolescents.
Awesome.
I'm Melissa Masardo, I have two boys in third and, first and fourth grade at Foxville. Somewhere in there, but welcome.
Hi, I'm Chris Monaco. I had four children graduate from the high school, I have 15 grandchildren, two of them are in the high school. Some have graduated, one's at Yale, one's at Brown, one's in a PhD program at UMass Medical. And they got a very awesome background at Burlington High School, so I am thrilled to have you join us.
Thank you, that's amazing, cool. Did you repeat your question?
Just a quick, like, give the 30-second blurb for folks that don't know your background, you know, where you've been, kind of just a couple of the wave tops, and then what the first 90 days looks like.
Sure, yeah. So, launched as a teacher. I was a history teacher at Framingham High School for 12 years, got the administrative itch and did a program here. I ran my first interactions with Burlington was coming when Edco Collaborative was over there off of the Middlesex Turnpike. I was coming up here taking classes for 18 months. And then I've spent my last seven, I think it was seven, seven or eight years at Waltham, both as a, at the high school as in their assistant principal and the principal most recently. Decided it's time for a change, Burlington posted, it was a great opportunity. We have some, have some proud parents that are colleagues, that were colleagues with me down in Waltham, had nothing but good things to say here. You know, I come up to Burlington a lot with my family, the commercial, all the commercial stuff up here, so it was, been kind of, got to know a little bit and decided it was good and I'm proud that, I'm happy that they've taken a chance on me. 90 days is getting to know everyone, really, just to put it that simple. You know, I'm sitting in a room with administrators, in a room with staff, you know, everyone has eight years this, 15 years that, 17, like, it's just, everyone has 20, like, it was a lot of years, so I feel like I got a lot of catching up to do. So, I, my, my plan with the staff is to just rolling, beat with them, get ingratiated, get to know. In my role as associate principal, what can I do to help? Mainly is to, probably the topic of that conversation, get to know the students, the activity fair today, that was really, we had that going on today, that was cool, just to kind of see, get to know the culture of the building a little bit. And next week we have our open house, you know, I did communicate out the families, but it'd be nice to see some families here in person and have some face-to-face and just so they have a face to go along with the name that went out on Parent Square. So it's really just playing catch-up to a very established, stable culture here with a lot of people, a lot of years here in this district.
Awesome, thanks.
So, Madam Chair, the agenda item is the second reading of the high school handbook, so you've had the high school handbook first, and so...
Braggs will answer all the questions. Talked about a 90-day, right? This is his real test.
Okay, so let me, I could ask again, let me try again. So, let me get through that. The, you have the draft, let me get to the right agenda item, I apologize. So this is the Burlington High School second reading. Again, you all have had the high school handbook. I think Dr. Chen reviewed the handbook, as did the high school administration. She had our student services attorneys go through it to make sure the language was, was up to date and reflecting some of the changing policies that are, that are happening. So it's recommended the committee vote to accept the high school handbook as a second reading.
I have questions, but I'll move to approve it for discussion.
Okay. Second. Go.
Okay. So here's my problem, which you already know about, but whenever these lists come out in, in newspapers and magazines and they rank schools, it drives me nuts, because I know what a good school Burlington High School is. I worked there a long time ago, but I worked there. And my kids have gone there, I know what a good school it is. But we don't get ranked the way I think we should, and I believe it's because we don't pay proper attention to the criteria that these groups use. And I know it's extra work for somebody to figure out what's the criteria for this rating and what's the criteria for this one, and, but I think it's worth the extra work personally. I would like to see our ratings go up. So, one of the things that makes a difference with some of the various magazines, newspapers, is how many AP courses are offered, and how many kids take the test, and how they do on the test. And because I've been here a while, I know the history of the AP courses, and I know that years ago, we had some AP courses, but they weren't really, and they were, they were really honest courses. And then, great effort was made to have excellent AP courses. And at the time, at the very beginning, I believe the plan was that if you took the test, you got five credits, and if you didn't take the test, you got four credits. So, everybody took the test, because they wanted the five credits, because the kids who take AP courses are clamoring for the higher rankings in the school. So, over the years, that, that changed, and now we're in a place where you don't have to take the test. And I understand, I mean, I've got a senior at the high school now, and I'm sure she doesn't want to take AP tests after she gets into college and knows where she's going. But, if I have my way, she'll take the AP tests. And actually, I shouldn't say I'm sure, because I had never even asked her, I don't know, maybe she is planning on taking the tests. But I think we've done ourselves a disservice by not requiring the tests. And I know parents have to pay for them, and I know that we could offer to subsidize it. But my whole issue is, I want us to be recognized better, and I know that's one criteria, I'm sure there are others that could be looked at. But that's my goal in objecting to the wording in the handbook, is because I want those rankings to go up.
Yeah, I'm not really sure the analytics behind the rankings. Again, I live in a community with one of them, they were a top 10, and then the Boston one came out and it went to like 50, so that was a big uproar where I live. In the community I'm in, if you take the AP test, you get AP credit, if you don't take it, you get honors credit. I think every community approaches it a little, little bit differently. I think one of the reasons we went test optional this past year, and I believe the recent rankings you're discussing were talking about 22, 23, or 23, 24 AP scores, not last year, so I don't really know how that impacted the rankings, they might have improved them for next year, it remains to be seen. But a lot of our kids are engaging with a dual enrollment program, so they're choosing to purchase college credit and not take the AP test, because that's a better value for them, or it's going to serve them better when they graduate post-Burlington High School. So, it's probably a variety of factors in there, but I'd be happy to dive into the analytics and see if there's ways that we can... be seen. But a lot of our kids are engaging with the dual enrollment program, so they're choosing to purchase college credit and not take the AP test because that's a better value for them or it's going to serve them better when they graduate post-Burlington High School. So it's probably a variety of factors in there, but I'd be happy to dive into the analytics and see if there's ways that we can do things behind the scenes to help improve it if, if that's important to folks. And again, I just want to say that the rankings are one thing, and I agree, I think we have an excellent high school. We have a lot of terrific, terrific things happening. And what none of these rankings do is measure kind of what makes schools great, which is the people and the programs that are within them. It doesn't measure any of that stuff. So I wish they did because I think we would jump up exponentially if they, if they did. But they look at very finite numbers and demographics have a, a big factor into it. We're a very diverse community. We're, some of the highest ranking communities are not. That, that certainly impacts things as well.
That's a huge piece of it.
Sure.
But...
Yeah, and I think this is probably a better program of studies discussion, you know, and certainly when we come in January to do that, I can have some additional information for you and perhaps try to figure out the analytics.
I could deal with you.
Let me go ahead.
I'll vote, I'll vote to approve if we can have that discussion about the AP stuff.
Yeah, I think Darren's back there. I think we have to have a handbook in place. I think it's state law, but I don't know. I'm not 100% sure.
But I don't have to vote for it.
That's right.
So I, I agree with Chris and I think the whole AP thing has been going on for a while. Because I think I even questioned that back when my daughter was taking the AP exam. And there is an advantage if you, you know, score a certain score because you test out of having to pay for courses when you get to college and she tested out. So it helps financially if they do test. So I think we need to make sure that we are encouraging them to take the test. I mean, again, there's a financial burden to take it, but you're also getting a benefit if you do well. So I think we need to sell that properly.
Yeah, when we change the language, we, we use strongly encouraged. And all of our teachers strongly encourage our, all of our students to take it. And I think of, I don't want, I don't know the specific number, but a majority of our kids still engage with the AP exam. There might be certain courses where they don't. But a lot of our kids still do take it.
Thank you. Through the chair, how much does an AP exam cost?
$3.75, $3.50, $300, something in that range.
Do we have any data on how many students we have that take the AP class but do not take the AP exam?
I can get that for you. I don't have it on the top of my head.
And so AP versus dual enrollment, what's the split? Is it 30% AP?
That are taking the test and choosing the credit and vice versa?
Just saying, oh, I'm going to go with dual enrollment because it's maybe more straightforward.
Again, I don't have the percentages with me, but I can get, I can get those for you.
Thank you.
And some of our advanced placement courses are also dual enrollment courses. So they might serve two purposes.
Correct.
And through the chair...
A lot of them are, right.
And so a high score on advanced placement exam may help you in skipping an introductory course, but most colleges and universities still want you to pay for four years of tuition.
Right.
The difference with a dual enrollment class is if you can make progress towards your associate's degree, then if it's coming from an accredited community college typically, then those credits actually count towards your degree progression. So you may in fact be able to reduce the time and tuition that you're spending. So there's a couple different strategies. I think the state has created some different semantics that make this confusing. So one of the state's priorities is early college, if you've heard of that. Those are kids earning high school credit and college credit concurrently, which is what dual enrollment is. So, and one of the frustrations that we have, which we're trying to sort out, is some of the community college credits would be free after high school, but they're making our students pay for those courses if they're taking them while in high school. And I think that's a sort of a state problem that they need to fix. So we're, we're working on all that. I think we can get you the data that you're asking. And Mark, the program of studies conversation is typically around January.
January, yeah.
So we'll...
Usually the first, first meeting in January.
We'll get you the, that time. And our philosophy, or I guess I'll say my philosophy, has always been to try to have as many people, as many students' success as possible. So we have all of our high school students, Mark, sophomore year, take the PSAT, which we pay for.
Which you pay for, right.
Not every district does that. And the easiest way for get, to get some of our standardized scores to increase is to limit the number of students who can take it. So, and so I think that there is some gaming of the statistics. And so sometimes, I think we just need to be careful. We want to encourage all students to have that opportunity, even if the research I'm reading shows, even if they perform poorly, having that opportunity gives them greater success after they leave Burlington High School because they have that exposure and that access. So I think that's really what we're trying to do. And I would, again, I have to be careful how I say this, I would sacrifice a lower ranking to do what's best for kids to survive after high school. And we need to talk about more than that. And we certainly need to learn about the algorithm. I would like to rank higher. I'm not saying I wouldn't. I'm just saying, sometimes the choices that we are making to encourage more kids to take standardized assessments means that our average, sort of, our district average may be lower. So.
I guess, I mean, I, I don't disagree with that, Dr. Conti. I think, you know, artificially kind of trying to skew the numbers is probably not the right way. I think maybe instead of trying to subsidize test, we reinvest those resources in closing the learning gap, right? Because again, there's a lot of reporting out. The National Education Survey just came out about the burgeoning education gap, right? Because you have really high performers and then the folks that aren't performing as well, that gap is growing. So maybe focusing resources in that middle group to help bring the collective up would be money more well-spent, in my opinion.
Agree.
So I think that someone, and I don't know who, it should be somebody's job to figure out what criteria are used by various groups so that we know the criteria and make our decisions based on, well, we really care about that and why don't we work on it? Or, you know, we don't care about it, we'll take a lower ranking. You know, knowledge is very important. And if we don't make the effort to find out what's driving these things, we're not going to get anywhere. So I would just like to see someone take the time to find the criteria for these various publications.
Through the chair, we will, we'll do that.
And again, I, I think the reason, I don't want to speak on behalf of you, but that you're interested in looking at it is because, again, we all believe that the schools, the Burlington School System is much better than what it appears. And unfortunately, when these rankings come out, it's all over social media.
Great.
And everyone complains and how terrible, you know, we are. And we're not. And so I think that's kind of a way for us to try and figure out how do we get a good balance so that, you know, we don't get that negative reaction on social media when we don't rank as high as, again, we think we should. And, and so how do we kind of fix that by realizing what the criteria is? And as, you know, you were maybe saying that we decide what's important and how we approach it and, and how we deal with that.
So Madam Chair, there's a...
Motion in the table.
Second.
Yeah. Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes, so it's 5-0. You have a handbook, Mr. Sullivan.
That you need to have, right?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark, I think we're all set.
Nothing else?
Darrell, thank you for showing up.
Nice to meet you.
I'll come, you too.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Do the other two handbooks while we're here?
Again, they're, they're first reading, so certainly you can, I'm not sure there should be a lot of discussion. You can certainly check them off the list. So again, these were reviewed. Dr. Chen reviewed both the elementary and the middle school handbooks. Again, reviewed them with our student services council. The language has been updated.
The language has been, through the chair, the language has been updated. So what you were given were things, the things that were highlighted were the changes from one handbook to another. And most of those changes, as you can see, is we had to have a new bullying intervention plan. We'll be talking about the civil rights policy when it comes to the food services. And they were also the recommendations of what we needed to update with regard to policies in both of the student handbooks. So they've been looked at with a very fine-tuned comb with our school attorneys.
And you did receive an email today. We will post the first, again, if you all decide to move forward, we can, we'll post the draft policies. And so parent, parents can look at them ahead of the second reading and can ask us any questions they have.
Well, like someone mentioned, I think we need middle and elementary handbook, so they got to go forward, right?
Again, as this is a first reading, I would, I would hope so. And then we'll make them available. And then, and then we can, we can sort of figure that out.
Any questions on them for this, tonight? Okay. Are you including this food services civil rights policy in what you just said?
Yes, it's, it's been...
Okay, so we'll just be done with the pol, these policies.
If you want me to discuss it, I can. I can tell you about the updates, but the policies, everything that's been updated is in there.
Okay. So in what you sent us, all the yellow is update, right?
Is what was updated and is different from last year.
Yes.
I took what was compared of last year to what is this year. And everything that's highlighted in yellow has been updated.
That was a lot.
It was a lot.
I'm not going to ask that. I'm still going to Darrell.
Through, through the chair, will the version updated or uploaded online, will it be highlighted in yellow so everyone's can see where the change is?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the intention.
Okay. So back to the top here. All right, so we have two survey policies for the second reading.
Yes. So Madam Chair, we have survey policies for the second reading. There were some questions at the last meeting. And I thought it might be helpful to have Darren Klein here. And I think he just wanted to answer any questions that the committee may have. So Darren, if you could, I think you know everyone, but introduce yourself and...
I have one of my colleagues that called my panel. She's been helping with lots of issues. Don't worry, you're only being billed for one of us.
Cole's been a great help, so.
You made her do the hard work, right?
Well, it depends on how you look at it. Nice to see everyone. Good evening, everyone.
So there's a sort of a, a twofold part to this, is there's the survey policy and, as we discussed, we had created one specifically for the youth risk behavior survey and one for other non-academic surveys. And because we have some of the non-academic surveys that are occurring, if you pass that 15-day non-academic survey that we need to discuss tonight as well. But I think this conversation right now is not about those surveys, it's about the survey policies themselves. So there's a, again, there's a YRBS and, and a non-academic survey policy. And again, there is a requirement that the school committee would approve the policy, I mean, approve the survey itself before we even can administer it. Parents would need to have access to that survey. And then the school committee, if they approved the survey, would also at the time need to approve, need to decide whether that would be an opt-in or an opt-out for that particular, for that particular survey. So while not mandating an opt-in, opt-in is still a, an option moving forward, but you would need to approve the, sort of, the raw survey first. So again, using the YRBS as an example, I know I'm beating this dead horse, is you would need to see the YRBS, you would need to approve the survey as a committee publicly. That survey would then obviously be a public document. And then you'd need to decide whether that survey is administered in an, with an opt-in or an opt-out. So those would all be public conversations moving forward. Darren, I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Through the chair. Just to add, what we did is we, we took the recommendations of the consultant you hired, Attorney Sankey, and we, we put into the policy all the, not only all the things that he said were required, but I think virtually every one of his recommendations has been, has been put into that policy. And we obviously looked at the relevant laws and similar policies as well. And that's what's before you tonight. That's, that was sort of how we drafted the policy, the way, each policy the way, the way it is.
So we need a motion?
Yeah. Do you want to do them? Let's do them separately. You want to start with the noneducational student survey?
Sure. I move that we approve the Burlington Public Schools noneducational questionnaires, surveys and research YRBS policy. Is that the wrong one?
Yeah.
It's the other one. So different...
Are you looking, what are, that's different than what I have.
All right, tell me what to say.
Just the noneducational student surveys, questionnaires and research. Is that what everyone else is looking at?
I don't, you have a copy. I wasn't providing a copy. You know, you're packing, so I'm not prepared to vote on you.
It's from last, it's from last, the eight, the 822 agenda.
Oh, all right. So we'll pull up the 822 agenda.
Mr. Brooks, there was not one in your packet?
Nope.
Or from the last packet?
No, it's, it's in the last packet.
It's from the 822...
Okay, we're voting on a final policy, second reading.
No edits were made from the 822 policy.
Again, it says we're voting on the final policy. It should be in the packet to review in front of us that this is the final version. I'm not going to, I'm not prepared to vote on this. And I'm, I'm going to abstain if we move to your vote.
Okay, we need the, let's see. Do you have it?
May I ask a question?
I have both pauses here, if you want to see them for, for your motions.
How about, could we just copy them and, and take a few minutes to look at them and then Jeremy won't have a problem.
I'm not going to vote on these tonight.
That's fine. That's fine.
Can I ask a question though? Did, may I ask a question through the chair? Did anything change from the first reading to the second reading?
No.
To my knowledge, no. This is exactly what I sent the subcommittee...
So there's nothing different?
...a few weeks ago.
Yeah, it's the same as it was.
Because I didn't see any update, nothing.
Yeah, I, I didn't attend the first meeting of the school committee, but it's exactly what I sent the subcommittee and the, and Eric about three weeks ago.
The one word that was discussed.
There's no changes with the documents I brought.
It's the one we talked about in the subcommittee meeting. And then we talked about it at a first reading, and this is the second reading.
Yeah.
Again, through the chair, I think Guardian was left out. We had discussed. Mr. Brooks, you had brought that up with the last one, so we would need to add the word in, Guardian.
Sure. And that can be noted in whatever motion you make tonight.
14th, 2025. Mary Ann sent it.
Thank you. Oh, so this is the one, noneducational student surveys?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeremy, do you want to, we can just vote on this one tonight, just because we need the 15-days notice, but I'm happy to postpone the YRBS. If that makes you, Mark, gives you time to look at just the one.
Yeah, I understand nothing's changed. But again, it's one of those things where, you know, a meeting happened, it was discussed, we brought it forward as first reading and it should be in the packet. It's just trying to follow and make sure we're methodical and thorough about the things we do. And it just, I don't feel like we're doing that.
I think that's pretty unfair. You've got it in your computer. We've had a subcommittee meeting, we've had a first reading, and now you, you can't find it in your computer. So, yeah, thanks. in your computer, so, yeah, thanks.
Yes?
I have it. Thank you. Yep.
Each one is this, the YRBS?
Yes, ma'am.
And I found the other one, so I don't really need the other one.
Madam Chair, through you. First of all, I greatly respect the school committee only voting on either policy when they feel they're ready to vote on the policy. So, I'm not trying to change that at all. I will say that we are, we'll be talking more about executive session, but we are filing responses to those complaints. And so, it would be helpful to indicate that action's been taken on the policies, but, again, that to me is secondary to the school committee only voting when they want to vote on the, when they feel the policies are ready to be voted upon. But we would, we would sort of indicate in those responses, the actions taken by the, by the school committee, you know, at tonight's meeting.
Okay. While we're on the non-YRBS, the just non-educational survey, it contains an opt-out option and opt-in option, and to clarify, each survey that we vote on, we would then vote opt-in or opt-out at the survey level, correct?
Correct. So, there's, there's a timing component in each policy that has to be submitted a certain amount of days before being given, and a part of that process would be you voting on whether to use an opt-in or an opt-out for that given survey. That also is in the YRBS policy as well.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Burlington Public Schools' non-educational student surveys, questionnaires, and research policy.
Second.
Additional comments, questions? Darren.
Would that be with the change that Mr. Brooks had suggested to add in the word guardian?
The word guardian.
Where does the word guardian fit?
Parent or guardian, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make sure it's consistent throughout. If that, to make sure that parent or guardian is noted throughout.
With the addition of the word guardian attached to parent or guardian.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obseen? Chair votes yes, so it is four zero one.
Okay.
Survey.
And I'm, because I think we need this for the response
I agree.
to the Department of Education, I'm going to make a motion that the, that we approve the Burlington Public Schools' youth risk behavior survey, YRBS, as it's known, policy as submitted to us, and do we need to put?
Why don't you just vote it that way, and I'll make sure.
Ensuring that.
The word guardian is in where it should be. Okay.
Second.
Additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obseen? Chair votes yes, vote is four zero one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to stay, because I think we had, I think there's one question on the next, we have to vote the surveys now.
Sure.
Well, Eric, you.
Yeah, Darren, I just.
Stay here as long as, we're here for the executive session.
He bought his coffee, yeah.
Madam Chair, may I move on to the fall screenings? Because of the school committee vote last spring to, to stop all sort of surveys of students, staff is, was being very cautious, and so with the adoption of the non-academic, we do have some screenings that are occurring in the fall. Some are state mandated, some are not. So, the sort of initial one, where we need to bring these before the school committee with the 15-day commitment for families, I shared with you some of the screenings ahead of time in your packets. So, the, the health screenings are state mandated, been around for a long, long time, and they do allow an opt-out. So, Darren and I have gone back and forth as to whether these even fall under the purview of the non-academic surveys, because they're state mandated and don't really hit any of the criteria sort of purely in terms of the policy you just passed. But, again, everyone's being really cautious and wanting to be as transparent as possible. So, I want the school committee to either tell me that they don't fall under the policy, and you're fine, and we'll make these publicly available, and parents will opt-out as they always have, or if you believe otherwise, then if you would, these are state mandated, so I think we have to offer them. People don't need to participate. And then the intention is to, we're sort of building this as we're going, is to make sure we're communicating with parents and making the opt-out procedure as simple as possible. We are receiving requests to opt-out sort of in a, as a list or as a general, but we really want to make sure we have specific opportunities, even if not this year, that we work towards having a specific process where parents can see all of the screenings that are upcoming, and then can opt-out of each one individually. Because for some reason, a parent might want vision and hearing but not want the posture or the BMI, and sort of give them that, give them that choice. So, I guess, long-winded sort of question here is, we have to do these screenings, we are going to communicate them out to parents, that is the state requirement. Parents have, through the state and through us, the ability to opt-out, they always have, we will be communicating that. If these fall under the non-academic policy in your perspective, and maybe with Darren's guidance, then I would need you to vote to approve these surveys, and then you would need to vote that they're an opt-out, which, again, I believe is state required. If you don't believe they fall under your policy, then we're gonna go through the process we normally go through. We have to offer these, and we will still allow parents to opt-out. So, Darren, you and I went back and forth as to whether.
Yeah, I mean, in my opinion, the screenings are seeking just sort of physical health information as opposed to like, psych, you know, mental health issues. In my opinion, don't necessarily fall under the policy, but you're certainly welcome to earn the side of caution, or even if they don't strictly fall under this policy, to follow the same rules with the screenings. There's certainly nothing wrong with being extra cautious, if that's what you want to do. I don't, I don't think a physical screening or a test that's listing sort of physical information falls under this policy per se. But you can still follow the same rules, whether it falls under the policy or not. If you want to follow the same precautions, obviously, that's the school committee's right to do so.
I'm fine with doing that. Do you want to, anyone make a motion for all four screenings together?
These are for.
Vision, hearing, posture, BMI.
Right.
Well, no, those are separate. So, the physical, like the physical screenings.
And through the chair, we'll have an option, parents will have an option, guardians will have an option to opt their students out in one location, or opt them in.
Again, I think, again, if you're gonna, the screenings are required, so I'm saying, I think we have to do them. But we're just asking you to sort of approve them under this policy. The state does allow an opt-out, so that's sort of, the state is already saying parents can opt-out of this, so I would hope, my recommendation would be that you would approve the screenings as an opt-out, because that's sort of what we've done for years. And then, it's just a matter of us getting that communication out to parents, getting the screenings available, and again, 15 days ahead of time, getting multiple communications out to parents, so that they know if they haven't communicated with us, or they want to make sure that their child has opted out of these four state-required screenings, that we get that information. Staff is very concerned about making sure that the screenings are approved, because of the conversations that we've had, and that they're clear on who is opting out of the screenings, which, again, I think that's the whole point of the policy, is to make sure that we are more careful about who's opting out of the screenings. So, my suggestion to the committee was, please approve the state-mandated screenings, and I would recommend that you, if approved, that you approve them as an opt-out as they currently have, as they're currently executed in the, in the state recs.
Not my turn.
No.
What?
To make the motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, to clarify, so the vision, hearing, posture, all BMI screenings are as an opt-out. Any questions?
Probably saying it falls under the non-educational policy or not, because that was a question that was kind of bounced around.
I think, I think we're saying we're erring on the side of caution. I feel like the nurses probably would prefer us cover them.
No, I agree. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I just want to make sure we're clear about whether we say it, non-educational or not.
I don't think it falls under it at all, but I'm willing to go with.
I don't think it does either.
Yeah, I think you can just vote to.
To offer them.
Whether, yeah, well, you'll follow the process, even if, regardless of whether or not they fall under the policy, the motion would be to follow the same process that's in the, in the policy. So, maybe just vote it that way. Move that you, you follow the opt-out process that's in the policy without making a decision whether or not it falls under.
Okay.
That's what you said.
Yes.
Probably could've said that a little clearer.
You go to Mary Ann? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes yes, it's five zero.
Thank you. Now, a completely separate category, our anti-bullying or social-emotional learning curriculum, Wayfinder, we're in our fourth year, K-8, has a pre-test and a post-test. The pre-test, it's meant to look at sort of student skills as they develop. It is a student questionnaire and screener, so staff, again, this one is not mandated by the state, so this is a sort of a, it's a district-based curriculum. The intention of this, again, it, because it's a pre-test, post-test, the pre-test occurs early in the year, and our intention would be to make the questions available, and then present parents with an opt-out. And we did talk to Wayfinder, and there is the ability for any parent who opts out, opts out, for us to not provide the student the link. So, that was also an issue that we had with the YRBS. So, I gave you all a copy of the questions. Again, I think I gave you much more information than the questions, but I thought the questions were not covering any topic that was, that would be a problem, but I think, again, in order of transparency, wanted you to see the screener, approve the screener, and I could even argue, social-emotional is academic, but I'm not gonna do that, but just say, if you approve the screener, then we would also, my recommendation would be to do this as an opt-out. And just to clarify, if you're approving an opt-out, that means if we don't hear from a parent, that we're gonna assume the child is gonna take the pre-test. So, sample some of the questions, where be, I care about how other people feel, I am happy for other people when something good happens to them. Again, you read the three to five pre-test and the secondary pre-test as well. Again, we'll make the questions available to, for parents and the public, and then, again, my recommendation is that you approve the Wayfinder pre-test, and that you approve it as an opt-out.
So moved.
Second. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes yes, it's four zero one. Four one zero, sorry.
Through the chair, can I ask why Mr. Brooks voted against this?
Because the opt-out system hasn't worked in the past, and I don't believe it will again, so I'd like it to be an opt-in.
This particular test or all tests, or all surveys?
I made it clear that I'd like it to be opt-in.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
The next sort of critical one that you'll be seeing soon was mentioned earlier during public comment. So, we have done a school climate survey every December. Again, the attention is gonna be to bring the school climate survey to the committee well ahead of time. That would be a non-academic survey. We would make the questions publicly available, ask the school committee to approve the school climate survey. Again, we're really asking for feedback from students, parents, staff, about some of the things that we are doing. It does impact some of the changes that we make curricularly and otherwise, and we would ask you then to also vote as to whether that would be an, an opt-in or an opt-out. So, I know that was mentioned earlier, and I'm aware that December is typically when we do that, but these are sort of most immediate, and then we'll be bringing you any sort of non-academic screeners that we have moving forward. At some point, we are building it right now, we're gonna have all of them available, all at once, and then within, sort of, an opt-in, opt-out, so this, again, the surveys would be publicly available. If approved by the school committee, whether an opt-in or opt-out, parents would have that button to choose opt-in or opt-out. It would also allow families at the start of the year, for instance, to make whatever determination they have, sort of, all at once, and we would have a record of that. So, we're trying to sort of build that system as we go. There's gonna be more communication now than probably is needed eventually, but we're gonna make sure we err on the side of more communication, not less. So, so, so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chen?
Yes, thank you. We're on to the.
Journey to cares.
Journey to cares. Before we begin the slideshow, I wanted to highlight the amazing work that our BPS teams are accomplishing this month. In the business and finance team, they participated in multiple implementation meetings for the absence and substitute management model. They met with a immunist trainer, with career pathways, assisted in looking, expanding pathways to the middle school, writing a planning grant for partnership with counseling to create an early college program at the high school, and developing a timeline with Shannon Janowitsz for the fourth quarter senior internship program. And Burlington High School hosts a job fair for the internship program on Wednesday, November 19th, from 8:15 to 9:20. Communications team worked on updating the web provider, Power School, with digital learning, computer science, library informational technology teams. They prepare and distributed 1,200 new iPads for students. The English K through eight team met with a K through five, six through eight reading specialist team to prepare for reading instruction and intervention, and worked on a successful district-wide CKLA rollout and implementation. Human resources team onboarded all summer program staff, including summer academy, best, and summer band camp, over 110 new hires. Math K through five team collaborated with building math specialists to create presentations for classroom teachers. Mental health team presented to new staff on social-emotional learning and mental health resources. The nursing team worked on BPS medication procedure documents. The operations team began the upgrade of our maintenance ticketing system and posted the bus routes one week prior to the first day of school, and they completed fire inspections at six schools. The science and social studies team, K through five, prepared kits, materials for grades four and five, and adapted and revised the writing curriculum, K through three, for science and social studies for learning provided through the CKLA literacy curriculum. Special education team facilitated professional development on data-driven goals, and then specialized reading interventions. And the student information office team presented to new staff on Aspen and open architects and registered 51 students in grades K through eight in August. And now for the slides. In slide one, you have a picture of the new teacher orientation. We spent four days with new staff. Thank you to all the administrators and directors who participated, mentor teacher leaders, Jamie Kelly, Sita Dervosla, and Shannon Janowitsz for planning this. Next, in slide two, you will see that staff received ARC ed training, training on policies, safety procedures, and other protocols. You'll see a picture of the CKLA implementation team, planning out ahead of time, these are teacher leaders, with Dr. Bonnie Nichols and Renee Sacco. Thank you to Sean Musselman and Wendy Palvacek for assisting in this process. Next, in slide three, you'll see the first day of visiting various school classrooms. A shout-out to, to our really amazing teachers, also both at Memorial and also at Fox Hill. And the next slide, in slide. And the next slide, in slide four, we rode school buses. Dr. Conti, thank you to Grace Kuna. He went to the middle school, Memorial, and then the high school. Thank you to Travis Kuna. I got to travel with him to Pine Glen and then later on to Frances Wyman. Next, in slide five, we have some pictures of the first day of school at Fox Hill and also welcoming students at Memorial. Next, in slide six, Carrie Lamprou, the director of English learner education, summer programming. Thank you to Karen Hoyt, Melissa Parnell, and their assistants for another successful incoming kindergarten summer program. The multilingual students in this program got a head start with learning kindergarten routines, expectations, and curriculum. Again, thank you to Kat Kamara, Catherine Wells, and Lily Guttenplan for teaching students in the elementary program. Thank you also to Shmika Marcellus for teaching the middle school program for incoming grade six students. Thank you to Miley Castro for coordinating all the programs and lending her driving expertise. And a special thank you to Rosemary De Souza, Danielle De Souza, and Nicole Doherty for volunteering their time to drive students in our new BPS van. Summer screening, thank you to Karen Kim for organizing and facilitating the summer screening process for elementary, middle, and high school students. And a special thank you to Gloria Wotestic for connecting with the parents and to Gina Victoria for volunteering their time to help. Next, in slide eight, we have Gloria Wotestic, who is the director of family and community engagement. There was a parent information session for new L families. Worked with Karen Kim. The L Weeda Assessor presented welcome to BPS parent information sessions while students were screened in August. Also, there was a grade six parent orientation on July 30th, attended and presented to the grade six parent orientation, led by the middle school administrators, with approximately 40 parents in attendance. Next, in slide nine, the opening of the middle school Wind Street Closet, Simon Hall, Simon Mall Partnership, Ball Business and Marketing Team. And finally, in our final slide, thanks again with students with Ruth McCall, the PE and wellness teacher at Fox Hill, and to our students on their bus ride with Dr. Eric Conti to the middle school. Thank you.
You got a school committee member and a select board member child in that picture all at once.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't, I didn't know, but yes, okay. So I think, as Dr. Conti said, really, it was, it was really nice to get out there to see all the students, to see all the hard planning that was done. I got to visit all the schools and it was a very smooth opening. Got to also see Dr. Mr. Darrell Braggs in action and really connecting with all the students and really all the, the teachers as well, too. So really excited to have him onboard. It was a very nice opening.
Sorry, I keep losing the agenda. Finance. Nicole, you're on. Nothing?
No, it's just, it was on the...
Standing finance report.
Standing finance report, but we haven't overspent.
Spent all our money on this one.
Haven't, we haven't overspent yet. Typically, you'll start seeing the, the numbers in, in October.
You'll see the first...
The first school committee meeting of November for October.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds good. Oh, now, I'm up. Fox Hill School Building Committee. It's been a minute since we had a meeting. I don't think I was at the last one. We're still working on...
The MSBA approved the...
60%.
Yeah, so the 60%, so that was a big milestone. And I think that Denisco is continuing to refine the documents. I think they are looking at Thanksgiving, sort of December, end of calendar year.
Bid timeframe.
Bid, bid timeframe, so honestly...
Did prequalify people, right?
We did prequalify four firms, but again, I'm never comfortable until I have the bids in hand because that's what makes it real.
Okay.
So good, good progress.
Yeah, yep. That one I remember. Go ahead.
I'll go with the BHS. So we just had a meeting before this meeting. The committee voted to pass on the estimate to the select board of $334,769,880. And that was voted unanimously by everyone who attended the meeting, including the school committee. The upcoming meetings, we have a planning board meeting on September 18th. We have an info session for town meeting members on September 23rd coming up as well. We have town meeting on September 29th, and then we have our next meeting for the committee on October 9th. And, and then as far as community outreach, we did attend the Beer Garden last week. We will be attending the Beer Garden on the 11th. We also got an informational video that was sent out. I believe a second one's going to be sent out. I don't think it was sent out yet.
It was.
Came today.
Came out today, okay. So some people didn't see that link, and I just want to make sure that...
And Jen is going to be putting them out on BCAT as well, so, but I'll make sure the non-parent square folks get it.
Okay. There was a BCAT interview that took place a few weeks ago. That's going to be airing on the 15th. We've got back-to-school nights we'll be attending. So, you know, again, anyone who has questions or anything about it will be at those meetings, and please feel free to ask all the questions that you have when hopefully you attend some of those community outreach. That's pretty much it.
Facilities.
Wanted to give a quick update to the committee regarding the storm that passed through us this weekend. As Dr. Conti already spoiled for you all that there was a tree down in the parking lot that Recreation, the police department did attend to. Also, outside of our properties, on the, on the telephone poles themselves, we've had two instances where electrical issues are impacting our fields. So as of yesterday, we have no lights on the varsity field or the middle school. Today, EverSource was on-site and fixed the varsity field electrical, so we do have lights there. We do have a transformer that is about a three-day source until we can get that replaced for the middle school. So we will not have lights at the middle school until that transformer is replaced. So that is expected potentially either Thursday afternoon or maybe Friday to when those lights will be back on.
And that's entirely...
So again, it's not an impact on our actual equipment. It was an impact outside of our property on the telephone poles that was causing this.
Entirely coincidental that both our fields, or they both controlled somewhere?
It was on the lines on the street. So the one that impacts the varsity field is not the same one that impacts the school. It's a separate feed that comes in, the one at Marshall Simons. Again, it's a complete separate line, it's not the same exact one as the one that impacted Cambridge Street. Just a coincidence, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's not the only issue, it's just, but I'm saying what's impacting us.
It's just the field, right?
Yeah, the lights for the field, and it's not, it's getting darker earlier, but not...
We are still practicing and playing on the fields until a certain time, but varsity field does have lights tonight.
Okay.
Middle school potentially Thursday or Friday, if the part is available to be installed.
Okay. And I assume everyone that's impacted knows them.
That's my question.
Yeah, athletics has made communications, Recreation Department has made communications, Recreation has had to reschedule or cancel some of the events that would take place later on at nighttime, but they are fully aware of what the circumstances are right now.
Okay.
And transportation?
So I will say that the start of school year, I believe, went very well. Now, with that being said, there are some caveats. You'll notice that I did send an update out yesterday, at the high school in particular. We are seeing some overcrowded on some buses. To offset that, we had a second bus, or I'm sorry, an additional bus come in the afternoon to help offset some of that ridership. But now, what will take place, if the update sent out yesterday, will go into effect on Wednesday morning. So we have posted that. We will send another update tomorrow. There are significant changes to bus one, bus seven, bus eight, and bus 14 at the high school, and the reason is to load, balance the ridership on those buses. There are other buses that were being impacted, where students were jumping onto other buses, so we were seeing an increase in the afternoon of traffic as well, too, on buses. So we believe that this fix will help the ridership. Again, ridership based on what we know and what we're seeing now. You all have a policy where we will, you know, give rides to every single, we provide a seat for every single child, so we will adapt to that. There are some other minor updates. We are across all of the schools. There may be some minor time changes due to adder changes, maybe some route changes where we've changed directions, et cetera. I'm calling those minor changes, but I do want to make everyone aware to please just review those. This is not the final change that we will make for buses. This is to address the currently known issues. There are other known issues that, at the beginning of the year, we anticipated a five to seven-minute increase in time due to the Cambridge Street traffic. Thankfully, we're not seeing that, so we have had buses arrive at schools, particularly the middle school, five to seven minutes early. We are reluctant to make that change. This is only day six, so this is the only data we have. So please be cautious and patient with us, parents, as we will continue to monitor that. We do not want kids sitting on the bus in a parking lot of a school for five to seven minutes, but we do need to make sure that, again, if there are inclement weather, if there is traffic, if there's construction, if there is anything, right now, I'm not willing to give up that five minutes, but I do believe that over the next week or so, we'll continue to monitor that, and I, we will make those adjustments as needed to those. We have received roughly 80 requests to make additional changes. We have not granted all of those as a yes, but we have made ones that were definitely deemed a safety concern. It's very popular for a lot of our requests to come in, addressed as a safety concern, but we do take those seriously. Some may not be as high of a safety concern. We do review that with the police department, with NRT Safety Department, with myself and my team. Obviously, want to thank Anisha, who I believe is online right now. Both of us have grown up in Burlington for our lifespan and are familiar with a lot of these neighborhoods and do travel around Burlington a lot as well, too. So we're very, very familiar with the community as well, so we will continue to adjust those, you know, again, as we see fit, but also as we can to work within the timeframe that we have. I think that's it for now.
Okay. You know my, my feelings about buses sitting early at the schools, so I'm glad we're moving things, moving those seven minutes back to the kids, so...
Correct. That is not happening on this current update.
Okay.
Initially, we were told the community that we would like to have the first two weeks to collect that data. Again, we're making incremental adjustments because we have added stops. We've also removed stops as well, too. So again, in the next week or so, we will make some adjustments to either free up that time or to make it seem fit.
Does the app have the ability to do like pop-up info notification, like not just the "your bus is coming" notification, but like for these students, and like your bus is changing? Like, do we have the ability to push anything like that via the app so the next time they open the app, it's like make sure you know if you're on one of these buses that you're changing?
Would love that feature. It is not currently available. The parent or the guardian has to interact and sign the bus itself. So when you have an account in the GoBeacon app, your children are assigned to you, and then you can choose the bus that is assigned to them.
And then you choose the bus, yeah.
There is not an automatic mechanism that will put you over into the new bus.
But even for like, could we push to everybody that next time everyone opens the app, it's like, alert if you're on this bus, please?
Like a push notification, you have to hit okay, so at least, you know, people saw it, right?
I'll ask that question, but I'm not aware that it is, and right now, we're communicating through parents.
No, I mean, I got the notification, too, and it's good because I don't have a high school, but, okay. Jeremy?
Yeah, just the only other question I had was, I got, I got reached out to a few parents on the Memorial Bus One, moving a stop on Peach Orchard to a little bit more conspicuous location instead of a curve. I don't know where that was at. We can talk offline, but I definitely wanted to bring that up because it seems like not a great spot to have a bus stop.
Yeah, I'll respond to the, to the chair, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
That has been addressed. I have been personally in contact with that family. That stop did go into effect starting yesterday.
Cool. Thanks.
All right. Any transportation, new world business, anything else? The, we have need for executive session due to Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 1, to discuss complaints or charges brought against the public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. United States Department of Education, Student Privacy Policy Office, complaint number 25-0726. We, oh yeah, we will only return to public for the purpose of adjournment.
And we will go to executive session.
Second. Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Novacek?
Yes.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Ms. Monica? Vote aye. We're in executive session.